Good morning, everybody. On behalf of the International Economic Association, I would like to thank the Royal Economic Society for agreeing and organizing this session, aiming at promoting young scholars born and or living in the developing world. Thanks to Daniel Rodri for promoting the idea and to Adam Seidu for collaborating on the selection of papers. Thanks to David Atkin and Daria Marine for accepting being the discussants of the session. Unfortunately, Daria, who is COVID and cannot be with us today, we wish her speedy recovery. Then thanks to our speakers, too. You will have 20 minutes, a 20-minute slot, including five-minute discussion, and we will reserve the last 10 minutes for questions and answers. Then those in the audience interested on asking any question, please write it as a Q&amp;A. I will be monitoring your question and address them to the speakers at the end of the session. Then Federico Unes is the first speaker. Federico, you have 20 minutes, and I will remind you when five minutes will be lasting. The first yours.
Great, thanks a lot. Can you see my screen?
Yeah.
Right, okay. So thanks to the organizers for having our paper in the program and thanks everyone who's joining today to the session. I'm going to talk about spatial production networks, and this is joint work with Costa Sarcolakis and Yuhime Yochi and given my affiliation to the Central Bank of Chile, the usual disclaimer applies. The motivation for this project is that a key feature of a modern economy is the geographic complexity of production networks. These production networks are fragmented across countries, across regions, and across firms, but the key ingredient is that firms are trading goods and services across these different dimensions of geography. The World Bank recently has been sort of showing that these global value chains and making the case that they are crucial for economic success, both within countries and across countries. And so we want to kind of push this research in terms of these two current approaches that have been advancing in parallel. On the one hand side, there's the microeconomics of how firms form endogenous production networks, and this has been rising in the last 10 years or so in terms of research. And the second is the macroeconomic conditions that are determined by the production networks, both across countries and across regions within a country. And this is something a bit more old in terms of research, but has been recently sort of picked up again, I think in part because of the development of new theories that are more tractable and also richer microdata. So this paper will provide a macro theory that is microfounded with empirics of endogenous spatial production networks. So we'll show how endogenous production network arise from this firm-level decisions across countries and regions, and we're going to link the micro to the macro and show explicitly how to aggregate these micro decisions, characterize equilibrium, do counterfactuals, evaluate the normative aspects of these theories, and so on. And we're going to look at how macro shocks endogenously shape these networks and look at both aggregate and distributional effects of these shocks. And in particular, we're going to look at, in the macro side, we're going to look at the welfare and efficiency properties and the role of the network formation in terms of propagating shocks, and we're going to focus on both international trade shocks and also infrastructure projects. So more in detail, we're going to build a microfounded model of spatial production network that is very tractable in terms of how it's aggregated. In terms of space, we're going to think about regions within a country and also trade between different countries. Firms will search and match with suppliers and buyers and form these production networks, and we're going to combine the model with administrative firm-to-firm data, transaction data from Chile. We're going to establish positive and normative properties of the equilibrium, so we're going to study gravity equation of trade flows and extensive and also the intensive margin. We're going to provide you conditions for uniqueness, the data requirements that we need to do counterfactuals and characterize the welfare effects of different shocks. And then we're going to go into the quantitative analysis, where we're sort of, this is kind of work in progress, but we're going to look at how search and matching friction, elasticities are different from different margins of trade flows, but we're going to show that they're really very relevant to sort of understand heterogeneity of these trade flows. And then we're going to show how endogenous networks are going to amplify aggregate welfare gains from international trade and also gains from infrastructure projects. I'm not going to have so much time to talk about quantitative analysis, so I'm going to focus on the empirical part and also the normative and mostly normative properties of the model. Okay, so in terms of the literature, I already mentioned that the paper is connected to both the macro and the micro of production networks. There's a recent literature on endogenous production network in space, which I think is kind of the closest one to our paper. There are a couple of papers here, but this is kind of really rising in the last couple of years. And we're going to provide, relative to this literature, we're going to provide a very tractable model that can speak to both the micro data and the aggregate data, and it's going to be very flexible. We're going to connect to the microfounded gravity trade models and sufficient statistics approach and show you how our model is going to depart from those, from this literature. And then naturally, it's going to be related to the propagation of shocks in production network, and we're going to show how the endogeneity of the production network is going to be important in terms of how shocks propagate. And our mechanism, our model of formation of network is going to be a model of search and matching friction, so we're going to connect also to this literature. Okay, so I'll speak briefly about the data, and then I'll go to the motivating facts, then the model aggregation and equilibrium, and then theoretical analysis. If we have some time, we can talk a bit about the quantitative analysis, that it's still work in progress. Okay, so in terms of the data, we're going to use domestic firm-to-firm transaction level dataset from Chile. This is collected by the Chilean IRS for value tax collection purposes. It's going to cover domestic trade between all firms in Chile during 2003 and 2022. But we're going to focus on the latest period from 2018, which has a better coverage of the firm-to-firm transactions. It's just the data is much richer on those years. The data is going to include both seller and buyer firm identities, the dates of the transaction, the total amounts, and the origin and destination location at the municipality level. And just to give you a sense, there are 345 municipalities in Chile. And this is going to have, I mean, this is going to be the information we have for all the transactions in this firm-to-firm relationships. We're going to combine this dataset with other more standard firm-level datasets, such as the custom data that's going to give us information on imports and exports, firm balance sheet characteristics that's going to give us information about total sales, and matching employee data, which is going to give us information on employment and wages. Okay, so just to give you an idea of Chile and also the domestic network in Chile, so this is Chile horizontally, you know, if I were to put it vertically, it would be kind of very small because it's a very long country. So it goes, you know, if you put it on top of the US, it goes from San Francisco to New York roughly, or in Europe, it covers, basically covers full of Europe if you put it diagonally. And so here, these dots are the municipalities, the 345 municipalities. The size of the dots is the size of the population of these municipalities. And the lines between these dots are the trade, the domestic trade that we see from the data. And we also show kind of the intensity in terms of how much trade flows there are between different municipalities. But you'll see kind of, just to give you an idea of how the data is sort of distributed across space in Chile's geography. Okay, so the first fact I want to show is how the number of links relate to both geographic characteristics and also firm characteristics. So here on the left-hand side, I'm plotting the average number of links that firms have in each location. So each square or circle is going to be a location projected on the population density. So the population per square kilometer, you see that both in terms of linkages with suppliers and buyers, there's a positive correlation. And then on the right-hand side, you have on the y-axis also the number of links, and on the x-axis, you have the total size of the firm in terms of sales. And this is low scale, and you can see also that there's a positive correlation for both suppliers and buyers. And what's kind of interesting is that the slope of this correlation is the same on both margins, but the levels are different, given by the sort of concentration of number of links that there are on suppliers versus buyer side. So I want to make a claim here is that the number of links that firms have is connected to both firm size and also the geographic location of the firm. So both those characteristics will be important, and we're going to touch back on this when we go to the model. The second fact they want to show is how the intensive and the extensive margin relate to distance. So we're going to run very simple regression, bilateral regression on these sort of bilateral municipality-level regressions of trade flows. We're going to project this on measures of distance. So you'll see that, you can see that if you predict the total flows of these domestic flows on long distance between municipalities, you're going to find a negative significant correlation, a bit larger. Maybe than literature, but still the ballpark. If you, this is sort of kilometer distance. If you use time travel instead, you're going to get sort of a similar idea, some of the results. And you can decompose the total flows, both in terms of the intensive margin, that is the volume per relationship, and the extensive margin, which is the number of relationships in these transactions. And you can see that the intensive and the extensive margin decay in distance at a different rate. In particular, the slope of distance is kind of, is going to be larger for the extensive margin than the intensive margin. Again, we're going to connect this back to the model now. Okay, so let me go to the model. So space is going to be partitioned by a finite number of locations. There's going to be a continuum of workers of measure L.I. There are going to be two types of goods, intermediate goods and final goods. And the ones that we're going to focus on are the intermediate goods, are going to be traded across locations subject to an iceberg trade cost, a standard iceberg trade cost. And firms will reach final consumers and buy and supply intermediate goods to other firms. And firms will be heterogeneous in productivity C, which is going to have a follow-on exogenous distribution that's going to be heterogeneous across locations. So just going to give you a sketch of how the mechanics of the production network formation works. So it's going to be a certain matching model between firms. Imagine there are three different locations. There are firms in each of these locations. And let's say that this blue location is sort of location that connects with final customers, which is sort of this person here. So firms will be posting ads, both for reaching buyers, this is NB, and for reaching suppliers, this is NS. And then all these posting of ads are going to be aggregated with an aggregate matching function, which is going to define the matching rates, both for suppliers and buyers, that are going to be generated in equilibrium. And given these matching rates and the ads that firms buy, firms will be able to create links with other firms in different locations. Also, we'll have firms posting ads locally, but there's not going to be any friction there. So as many ads they post, it's going to be transformed in terms of links with consumers. In terms of the math, firms will be obtaining profits from reaching consumers, final consumers. They'll get profits from reaching a buyer. So here, you can see sort of the number of ads and also the matching rates that they'll have in equilibrium. And they'll face a search cost that will be sort of have two components. One is sort of the slope of this cost, or the convexity of this cost, which is going to be governed by this gamma parameter, both on buyer side and seller side. And there's going to be a shifter, a fixed cost shifter, that's going to be sort of shifting the number, the cost of the number of ads the firms is posting. So these are going to be important parameters, both this F shifter and this low gamma. So given this, we can show that the number of ads that firms will post, say here, the number of ads to buyers and ads to sellers, we sort of follow the structure that you can separate this into a component that is bilateral in terms of location. It's going to be a function of search and iceberg cost and demand shifter. So basically, it's going to be a function of geography, but then it's also going to be a function of productivity of the firm. So this sort of connects back to fact one, in which we showed that the number of links is related to both geography and firm size. Okay, let me go to aggregation and general equilibrium. So we can show in this model that the gravity equation of aggregate trade flow sort of connecting back to fact two, we can show that the total number of successful relationship, that is the extensive margin from U to D, so from an upstream location to a downstream location, can be decomposed into a bilateral component, an origin effect, an destination effect. And what's important is that the bilateral component of this extensive margin can be decomposed into these F shifters that I showed you before. And also, it's going to be a function of this lambda parameter. And these lambda parameters will be the parameters that go into the matching function, the aggregate matching function. But you know, if you go to the intensive margin, so the transaction volume per relationship, you can also write down the intensive margin in terms of a bilateral component, an origin and a destination component. But what's important for us is that the bilateral component is only going to be a function of the iceberg trade cost. So this sort of connects to the fact two, in which we showed that there's a different response of the extensive and the intensive margin to trade friction. So you can see that the slope of the intensive margin to trade frictions, to the iceberg trade costs, is going to be just governed by sigma, the elasticity of substitution across goods, whereas on the extensive margin, it's going to be a function of sigma, but also of this lambda parameters that are governed by the matching function of links between firms. And in particular, you know, the response that's to iceberg trade cost is going to be amplified through the endogenous network formation. This is sort of what we want to highlight. At the end of the day, we want to show how this amplification through these parameters here that are sort of governed by the matching function procedure is going to matter in terms of aggregate magnitudes of how shocks propagate.
Federico, you have five minutes.
Yeah, yeah, that's great. Okay, so given the model, we can show some positive properties, so we can characterize sufficient conditions for uniqueness. In particular, we need that the substitutability in the models are greater than the search externalities in order to have uniqueness. We can characterize sufficient statistics for counterfactual equilibrium, so we can show that if you have import shares, you sort of bilateral trade between locations and export shares, and sort of the same sort of bilateral, but defined with respect to the seller, both within and across countries, you can do the full kind of factual, sort of D.K. type of kind of factual as usual in trade. We can characterize that in this particular case with exogenous production network, that is, in which the parameters of the matching function are equal to zero, so there are no sort of frictions in practice. I mean, there are frictions, there is kind of more extreme frictions in the sense that the network cannot adjust on the extensive margin. If you have that model, you can sort of go back to your standard gravity trade models with roundabout production, you know, you can Cortemel versus Lucas, Kalendomparo, and so on. So in that sense, you can move easily from the previous literature to our model, just moving a couple of parameters. And then we can show some normative properties. So we show that the welfare of each location sort of changes to shock can be sort of written into sort of this usual ACR type of formula, in which this is going to be a function of the changes in the own import share. But also, what's new in our model is that it's also going to be a function of the change in the number of linkages that firms have within their location. So again, if you shut down the extensive margin, the endogenous response of the extensive margin, so lambda is equal to zero, then you'll have that this M bar, M hat is going to be equal to one, so the extensive margin is not adjusting, and then you're sort of back to your standard gravity trade models and the predictions of the ACR model. So this M hat is going to capture the variety effect of domestic suppliers and how adjusting the links between firms is going to be important for the welfare effect of a particular trade shock. And the third part of the paper sort of showing how important this is quantitatively. I'm not going to show you this today, but just want to show you sort of the theoretical predictions that the model has. And then finally, let me finish with this. We can also sort of connect our results to sort of the Bakke and Farry type of analysis in terms of thinking about how, to a first order, how shocks propagate in the economy. And you know, if you think of a standardized trade cost sort of shocking these towels, the first order effect to the world GDP is going to be given by, first of all, a technological effect. So this is sort of the direct effect that sort of kind of like a Holton type of prediction. So this is going to be just weighting the shocks by the Dummer weights. This side will be the standard Dummer weights. But then in the context of our model with endogenous network effect, you'll find that the adjustment of the number of links that locations have with one another is going to be important for predicting the effect of trade shocks on world GDP. And in particular, again, you're going to have, the weight will be the Dummer weight, which is sort of the share of spending of J to I nominal world GDP, but it's going to be sort of mediated also by how the number of links between locations is adjusting. And there, you know, we show that the sigma, the elasticity of substitution is very important for governing the effect of the adjustment of the extensive margin on world GDP. So again, we're sort of extending the whole thing approximation at this bursting Bakke and Farry to a model where we have endogenous production networks. Okay, and we can also further decompose this adjustment on the extensive margin on search externalities that the model has and also your kind of more standard terms of trade relocation with the endogenous network, given sort of all this logical of Bakke and Farry, in which we're sort of in a second-best world due to this matching, search and matching frictions that cultures for a modern theory. Okay, by any interest of time, let me finish. We have some extensions with multiple sector mobility, population mobility, and also the quantitative analysis, which is sort of work in progress. But in the interest of time, let me finish here. We analyze the organization of endogenous production network in space. We develop a microfounded model of production network formation and apply the model to firms domestic and foreign transactions from Chile and show that the endogenous network formation amplifies trade frictions and welfare gains from international trade shocks.
Thank you very much.
I'm happy to take questions if you have any. Thanks a lot.
An excellent paper. I like it very much. Unfortunately, no questions are popping up. Then I will thank you very much, the participant of the session, if they can raise questions. Then I already have one for Federico, but I will ask Kita then, as we announced at the beginning. The list then moved to Pamela. Pamela, the floor is yours.
Great. Can you all see the slides?
Yeah.
Yes, okay, great. Thank you so much. Thank you to the organizers for including our paper on the program. It's great to present it in this audience and thanks for everybody, the online audience. This is Labor, Market, Power, Self-Employment and Development, and this is joint work with Francesco Morio and Monica Morlaco. So a longstanding view in economics is that a competitive labor market is crucial for the benefits of economic growth to be shared by workers as much as they are by firms. Unfortunately, there is recent evidence, especially coming from developed countries, that we are far from this scenario, that in fact, there is labor market power. We might, we know much less, if this is the case for developing economies. And you might think, and you might think, do you hear?
There is some noise in the
There is some noise, sorry.
Yeah.
I think our Zoom host is... This is what happens.
I cannot mute it.
I cannot, one second.
I'm trying to, but I cannot mute it.
Okay, well, let me continue. So, okay, great. Though, well, we know much less if this is the case for developing economies. And this is particularly important because if you think about developing economies, governments in developing economies are the ones who are trying to push these industrial policies that on the one hand are trying to achieve economic growth and productivity growth, but at the same time, they are trying to leave the population out of poverty. And this is not that easy, we think, that just like bring the evidence that we have for developed countries and the empirical evidence or the frameworks that we have to study labor market power in developed countries. Because labor markets in low-income countries are substantially different than those of high-income ones in ways, and we're going to propose that might shape our understanding as well as measurement of labor market power. So what are these ways? So the first one is that we are in low-income countries, we have huge barriers to firm growth. Fixed costs, entry costs, lower industry productivity that might like lead to higher employment concentration, which has been linked to labor market power. And second, and I think this is one we want to push in this paper, a feature of low-income countries is that they are characterized by huge self-employment sector. And this is sort of like very common sector, unregulated and easily accessible sector for workers that want to move away from wage employment. So this is not your entrepreneur in Silicon Valley, just to be clear. This is somebody that opens a shop in their own house or it's like informally being like producing manufacturing goods. This existence of self-employment, or I'm going to show you in a bit, creates a upward slope in labor supply for firms in the wage employment that is a necessary condition as well for market power to be exercised. So what we want to do in this paper is sort of like, put out a framework to understand labor market power in developing countries, pushing, like putting at the center the role of self-employment. And we're going to show you how it measures, it shapes the measurement and understanding, and also it can lead to important policy implications when we're thinking about policies that try to build a much higher wage employment sector. So how are we going to do this? Some precal paper, so we're going to go to a particular case of Peru between 2004, 2011. We're going to combine farm-level data with household-level data, so trying to reach like two sources of labor market power. And the first thing that we're going to show you is some Stylus fact that sort of like point out or motivate us to think about, we need to think carefully about what is the role of self-employment. So we're going to document, and I'm telling you this in a bit, that there is higher employer concentration, the coexists with a large active informal self-employment sector. But these things are not like together in a vacuum, but there is a systematic relationship between the two that is sort of like informative or might lead us to think that they are related to labor market power. So these facts are going to inform us because to build a generic equilibrium model, where we are going to explicitly have workers sort into wage employment versus self-employment, such that labor market power is going to be determined by two sources now. First, we're going to have the small number of firms competing for labor. So this is your strategic interactions that it's feature also in work in developed countries. But second, we are also going to see that worker sorting between the wage employment and the self-employment endogenously create this labor supply elasticity that's going to have interesting effects that we haven't seen before. Finally, we are also going to add free entry into this model because we want to think about the impact of policies. And in order to understand concentration, we also need to tackle entry. The model theoretically is going to give us some insights and then we're going to calibrate the model using stylist facts. That discipline the model to tell you some empirical implication. So the biggest theoretical implication of the model is that now we are not going to have a one to one relationship between concentration and labor market power. So increasing concentration does not necessarily leads to an increasing labor market power. Because sorting may oppose the strategic interaction channel. This is going to be finally an empirical question, how much it opposed, if it's completely like just unravels it. So we're going to go and then calibrate the model to the data and we're going to find that sorting in fact weakens our response of labor market power to aggregate shocks. Which tell us a little bit about how rent sharing is going to be impacted by aggregate shocks. And then we're going to show you because we don't have a one to one relationship with concentration and labor market power. So the result of policies that try to sort of like increase the size of wage employment, which has a lot of policies in developing countries. And thus want to reduce concentration. We have different effects on labor market power as well as other labor market outcomes depending on how they impact. The worker sorting between self employment and wage. So that's sort of like a gist of the paper. I'm not going to go into the literature in the interest of time. So I'm just right going to go into our stylist facts. So we're going to breach data from this, we have data from Peruvian firms as well as they don't Peruvian households. That we use in order to give you this stylist fact. So the first one is something that we sort of like suspected, but it's good to now see it. There is high levels of concentration among formal manufacturing employers. And this is not trivial. This is much larger when people have found, for instance, for the US, just to give you an idea. We have a local labor market defined by an industry geographic pair. And fifty two percent of the market in Peru have a half in the index based on wage bill of ninety five or more. So this is a very, very concentrated local labor markets. And these are not tiny rural areas that you may think, okay, nobody lives there. There is only one firm, but there's only like ten people. Like twelve percent of the manufacturing formal employment is concentrated in this very high concentrated local labor market. So they do account for, for, for the aggregates. These high concentrated local labor markets coexist with high. We look at a market with high self employment rates in these manufacturing industries. Again, just to give you an idea, forty three percent of these local labor markets have. Eighty percent of their total employment in the self employment sector. This is huge. And again, what is the self employment sector? This is a very informal self employment sector. Very easily accessible, just to give you an idea again, the transition rates between the wage employment and the self employment, the yearly transition rates are. Around twenty percent. So people are indeed actively moving from the wage employment to the self employment, we think, a very narrowly defined manufacturing industry. And these two things do not coexist in along, but they do have a relationship and we use here. Trade shock to understand the relationship between employee concentration and labor market outcomes. And we find that employee concentration among formal employers, it's negatively related to the average earnings in wage employment, which is sort of like. An indication of, oh, there might be some labor market power there. But this also permeates to the self employment sector. We see that there is also a negative relationship with the average earning on self employment. With a positive relationship with the size of the self employment sector. And importantly, there is a negative relationship with the average schooling in both sectors. And if you think about schooling being a proxy of abilities. It's sort of like hints to sorting of workers between these two sectors. So with this fact, we want to, we want to think, if we want to think about labor market power, we think we need something that creates this concentration. We need something that sort of like explain this, takes into account the self employment, takes into account this sorting. So that's exactly what we're going to, the ingredients we're going to put in our model. So our model is going to have a continuous local labor market, so they are going to be indexed by K. In each of these local markets, we have individuals that are going to consume a bundle of what we call market or industry level goods CK. Each of these industrial goods is going to come into varieties, one variety CM here. Which is going to be produced by a finite number of formal firms. And then a variety CS, which is going to be produced by self employed workers. Okay, so here you should think about, I want, I am a consumer, I want to buy a pair of tennis shoes. I have the option to buy a pair of tennis shoes from Nike, or I have to buy, or the option to buy a tennis shoes from Pamela's. We're going to have a very simple demand, a couple of class over all these market level goods and CES over these two varieties of the market level. This is our baseline specification, so it's just as simple as possible. We're going to have perfect competition in the goods market. And we're going to have strategic interaction, how a corner competition in the local labor market. How is labor supply? So labor workers are going to be choosing between wage work, which is sector M, the formal employment. Or the informal self employment sector S. They are going to be born with their capabilities or skills in both sectors that are governed by this distribution function G. Workers, of course, are going to choose sort of Alaroy to work in the formal sector if the earnings that they get working there are greater than the earnings that they get working on the self employment. And we have this W hat, which is a ratio of wages between the formal and self employment informal sector per efficiency unit of labor. This sorting is going to provide with some effective aggregated labor supply for firms in the manufacturing formal sector. And of course, we're going to have an elasticity from this labor supply. And it's going to be strictly positive. So this is your upward sloping labor supply, which is coming from the sorting of workers between the formal and informal sector. It's endogenous form, labor supply elasticity. On the production side, self employed workers are very simple, just a linear production function. And formal firms in the wage employment, again, this is the simplest case. We're going to assume for now that they are homogeneous and this, this, we can be relaxed, we can relax that. There is some market level productivity shifter Z K, right? So think about something that maybe the government can change or like the profitability aggregate. Such that total supply of the good of the manufacturing formal sector takes this form. This number of, integer number of firms are going to be determined by a pre entry problem where firms have to pay some fixed costs in final good units. This, we solve this problem of the firm and we're going to get our usual. Markdown specification where wage is going to be a markdown below marginal revenue product of labor. And this side here is your markdown, which in our case, it's very simple, but it reveals the two sources that shape labor market power. So on the one hand, on the one hand, you have this upward stopping labor supply here. Which is completely shaped endogenously determined by the sorting of workers between the two sectors. And then you have here, because we have homogeneous firms, this number of firms M here. Which is basically tied to strategic interaction channel and labor market concentration. If we have it, there is firms, yes, five minutes.
You have, you have five minutes.
So this will be the share of the firm in the market. So one thing that the model theoretically, the model tells you is that now there is no one to one relationship between concentration and labor market power. So you have now, yes, a direct effect between the number of firms and sigh, the measure of labor market power. There is also an indirect effect that is coming from the dogenous early created labor supply elasticity. This is a priority theoretically ambitious. So effectively, the indirect effect, the change in labor supply elasticity may oppose. Totally the effect of a strategic interaction such that we, labor market power might be in the opposite direction. So this is the first insight. Of course, we need to see that in the data. So what we do is we take the model, we calibrate the model using as moments. The first set of style effect that I show you. And what do we do? The first question that we want to answer is basically, okay, what will happen? Is how much of the change in labor market power after some exogenous profitability productivity shock is due to sort. Right? So how much sorting shapes the response of labor market power to shock, to aggregate shocks? Why do we care about this? Because this is decide, the change inside is actually what is going to govern. The pass through of aggregate shocks to wages, which is sort of like a rain sharing parameter. So what you see here on the left is it changes in this productivity shock, so just changes in productivity shock. And on the Y axis, you have the changes in this labor market power. That solid line is the overall effect when you have sorting and a strategic interactions and the dash line is when we take away sorting, it's just a strategic interaction. So first, the first thing that you see is that just having sorting softened the effect of aggregate shocks into labor market power. So the effect of productivity, in particular, the effect of productivity shock on labor market power could be twice as large. Without sort. This is meaningful quantity. But I think the way that it changes it, it's interesting in itself. So think about you have a negative productivity or profitability shocks or like an import competition shock. Right? What would have happened? Basically, if you didn't have sorting, if you didn't have sorting, that is the dash line. So labor market power, because the firms are exiting the market, concentration is increasing, labor market power would have increased much more. In particular, double at some point without sorting. So sorting for negative profitability shocks. As like having this self employment indeed as a buffer for workers to the negative effect of. Import competition shocks if we have a labor market power in second. We also do another exercise. I'm just going to go very quickly. So we have different policy targets in the model. So you have free centricos, you have this aggregate productivity shocks, and also you have the abilities of workers. That could have been tried, there is attempted to change them through these training programs to the youth to go from the informal to the formal sector. And I just want to show you that if you change all these parameters to sort of like achieve the same decrease in concentration measured by this H I. As you can see here on the top right panel, the effects on labor market power are going to be quite different depending on what parameter you are targeting. And it depends, every parameter is going to shape sorting in a different way. And that's sort of like the, the differences. The source of the difference that we're going to find. And this is going to permeate to earnings of wage and self employment as well as the size of self employment. So that's, that's, that's going to create totally different outcomes. So I just want to conclude, what we want to do in this paper is to understand labor market power in low income countries. In order to do that, we think that we do need to. Take into account the features of this slow labor market, labor markets, especially that sorting into the self employment sector. We build a model to include that and we hold that sorting indeed shapes the link between concentration and labor market power. And it has implications, positive implications for brain sharing and industrial place. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Pamela. Very, very interesting paper. Then let's move to the, to the following one. It is Caliani. Caliani, the floor is yours.
Can you see my slides?
Yeah. You have fifty minutes, right? I will tell you when five minutes will be ready.
Okay, thank you. Okay. So thank you so much for giving me the opportunity to talk about my work in this forum. My paper is titled size based regulations, why bunching can be misleading? So as the title suggests, the focus of my paper is on size based labor market regulations. These are government policies that impose a wedge between the wage rate and the actual labor cost of firms. After firms employ more than a threshold number of workers. So regulations such as these are prevalent around the world, for instance, as the US Affordable Care Act, which require firms with more than fifty workers to pay a tax penalty. If they do not give health insurance to all its employees. Or there are French labor market regulations that require French firms with more than fifty workers to provide minimum wages, health and safety benefits and job securities to workers. So rules such as these would encourage firms to stay small if the associated compliance costs are large. And this would raise several important questions from a policy perspective. So in particular, it's necessary to understand how large are these compliance costs for firms? What is the extent of distortions induced by these rules on firms and what are the aggregate productivity consequences of these rules? So in my paper, I offer a new approach to answer these questions. So existing work analyzes the impact of these rules on firms by exclusively focusing on a single metric. Which is the magnitude of bunching by firms at the regulatory cutoff. So since these rules bind only above a cutoff level of an endogenously chosen variable like employment. The argument is that firms can avoid falling under their purview by choosing a level of employment that's just at the cutoff. So previous work implies that the more bunching there is at the cutoff, the more binding the regulation is. So this is an example of the French, so this is the French firm size distribution and this is an example of a firm size distribution that exhibits bunching. So as I said, France has size based labor market regulations that hit firms after they employ more than fifty workers. And as you can see, in the French firm size distribution, there are too many firms that employ exactly fifty workers and there are too few firms that employ to the right of the workers. So in my paper, I depart from this a line of thought in three main directions. First, I show that size based rules can be extremely restrictive for establishments without causing bunching at the threshold. Second, by exploiting a policy change in India that led to an exogenous variation in costs imposed by a size based legislation on establishments. I argue that a more fruitful way to evaluate these rules would be to look at their impact on transitions across the relevant cutoffs. And third, I develop a quantitative framework to understand the mechanisms through which these rules induce distortions. To understand why the exclusive focus on bunching to identify these costs can be misleading. And also to quantify the aggregate productivity consequences of these rules. So in the interest of time, I'll be taking you over all these three parts very quickly. Yeah. So my paper belongs to the broad literature on misallocation of resources in developing countries. So in particular, I am focusing on a specific tool that can be used by policymakers to reduce misallocation, which is size based labor market regulations. And as I have already discussed, I identify regulatory costs by focusing on transitions around the threshold. The second broad literature that my paper fits in is that my quantitative framework is related to the models on labor search with multi worker perks. And it's also related to the models on network formation in international trade. Okay, so I built my arguments using the Indian employment protection legislation. Now, the Indian employment protection legislation requires manufacturing establishments with more than one hundred formal workers. To obtain government authorization and to provide severance pay before they can fire even one formal worker. So anecdotal evidence suggests that establishment owners face considerable delays in securing government authorization. Thereby increasing the uncertainty that they face during an adverse shock. So I interpret this as increasing the firing cost of establishments after they employ more than one hundred formal workers. The second source of cost is as follows. So labor regulations in India are imposed through frequent inspections of factory premises by government officials. These inspections take a lot of time and effort and there's a lot of corruption associated with these inspections. So I interpret this as increasing the marginal cost of production of establishments after they employ more than one hundred formal workers. Because these are incurred not just during adverse shocks and the amount of bribes that establishments pay typically scale up with the number of workers. Now, it's a well established fact that there is no evidence of bunching at hundred workers in the Indian establishment size distribution. So the Indian establishment size distribution looks as follows. There is formal employment on the X axis and the density of firms on the Y axis. The relevant threshold is hundred workers and as you can see, there's nothing going on at the hundred worker threshold in the Indian establishment size distribution. Despite this lack of bunching, this legislation could still be costly for establishments. So intuitively, think of the cutoff level of employment as a toll gate on the highway that charges a lot during certain hours of the day. So if you have a lot to lose from waiting, you're going to cross no matter what and pay the regulatory, pay the high toll charges. On the other hand, if your opportunity cost of time is not that high, then you're going to respond to these high toll charges by slowing down in general. Analogously, I expect establishments that are way below the threshold to slow down their hiring in response to these costly size based rules. As a result, what these costly size based tools are doing is that it increases the time that firms take to cross the cutoff number of workers. So this gets captured in the data as a decrease in the probability with which establishments transition from below the threshold to above the threshold within a given time period. So a series of policy reforms that were implemented in several Indian states, starting from two thousand and fourteen. Allows me to establish a causal relationship between this legislation and establishment level outcomes. So more specifically, starting from two thousand and fourteen, eight Indian states. She increased the threshold for the applicability of this legislation from one hundred formal workers to three hundred formal workers. So this can be interpreted as a variation in regulatory costs that these establishments faced in the treated states. So using data on Indian manufacturing establishments linked over time over a twenty year period, starting from nineteen ninety eight till two thousand and eighteen. And I also exploit the staggered implementation of this policy across Indian states. And in response to this, I find that establishments in the treated states are significantly more likely to transition from below hundred formal workers. To above hundred formal workers after the policy reform relative to the counterfactual. Keep in mind that hundred formal workers is the old regulatory threshold. The second finding is that the establishments in the treated states are significantly less likely to transition from below three hundred formal workers to above three hundred formal workers. After the reform when compared to before and three hundred is the new regulatory threshold. And there is no statistically significant impact of the policy reform on transition probabilities of establishments around any other threshold. I also look at whether this policy reform had an impact on the substitution pattern of establishments. So in particular, I consider if the policy change had impacted the substitution patterns of establishments with capital goods and contractual workers. So contractual workers can be roughly interpreted as informal workers. So they are part time employees of the establishment. They are paid much lesser than formal workers and they do not follow the, they do not fall under the purview of this regulation. So I implement a similar stagger difference in difference framework. And I find that the capital labor ratio and the contractual labor intake by establishments. That were previously around the neighborhood of the hundred worker threshold have decreased significantly after the policy change. And these outcome variables have increased significantly after the policy change as establishments approached the new threshold of three hundred workers in the treated states. And as before, there is no statistically significant change in these outcome variables for establishment. for establishments that were previously around any other threshold.
So. You have five minutes.
Okay, so I'll quickly go over the model. So the above, so in, in so far whatever I've discussed, I haven't said anything about why the Indian Employment Protection Legislation does not cause bunching in the establishment size distribution. Also, from a policy perspective, it's necessary to understand the driver behind these regulatory costs. So in particular, it would be useful to know whether these costs are because of the firing component or because of the corruption that's there in the enforcement of these regulations. And from a misallocation perspective, it's necessary to understand the aggregate productivity consequences of the regulation. So my model has roughly some key building blocks, which is very standard in literature. So my model comprises of forward-looking establishments with productivity levels that evolve over time according to an Onstein-Ullendbeck process. The production function exhibits decreasing returns to scale. And the establishments operate with three factors of production: formal workers, contract workers, and capital goods. These three factors of production are considered to be imperfect substitutes in the production process. I assume that contract workers and capital can be adjusted, adjusted instantaneously without any cost. So they are static inputs in the production process. However, adjusting the number of formal workers have hiring and firing costs. So hiring formal workers is time-consuming. Hiring requires effort by the establishment. More effort means if workers will come to work for the establishment faster on average. But establishments cannot always choose high levels of search because there are convex costs associated with it. And there is a convexity parameter which determines the sensitivity of an establishment's search effort to its expected marginal when it comes. Now, firing formal workers is also costly in my model. So I assume that every employed formal worker can quit the establishment at a natural rate. And on top of that, if an establishment wants to fire a formal worker, then establishments can choose a larger separation rate. So if they choose a larger value of the separation rate, the faster will formal workers leave the establishment on average. But they cannot always choose high separation levels because there are convex costs associated with it. So this is how I incorporate firing costs in my model. So convex costs associated with hiring and firing imply that establishments can adjust their formal employment only over time and not instantaneously. So given productivity and the number of formal workers that they have, establishments choose the surge effort and the firing rate that maximizes the discounted present value of their lifetime profits. And the optimal surge effort and the optimal firing rate is chosen in such a way that the marginal cost of that action is equal to the expected marginal benefits from that action. Okay, so what does my model predict? My model has roughly two predictions. So first is with a size-based regulation such as the Indian Employment Protection Legislation, that increases the marginal cost of production of formal workers and that increases the firing cost of production, that increases the firing cost of formal workers after, after establishments employ more than one hundred workers. So in the presence of such a regulation, my model predicts that as establishments approach the regulatory threshold, their increase in the present value of profits from having more workers is smaller. As a result, given their marginal cost of search, they put in lower search when compared to the case with no regulation. So as a result, establishments are more likely to spend in, spend more time on average in their respective states. And when they receive a shock, it's more like, it's less likely that they move forward. So larger the magnitude of regulatory cost, larger will be the decline in search effort, and smaller will be the transition probabilities from below hundred workers to above hundred workers. So this is consistent with my reduced form evidence. The second prediction is that, in my, based on my model, the steady-state distribution may or may not exhibit bunching. And this depends on the marginal adjustment cost of search. So consider establishments that approach the regulatory threshold of hundred formal workers. They slow down their search. So with a high separation rate of workers, what's going to happen with this slowing down is that establishments are more likely to fall back. Establishments are more likely to lose workers instead of gaining workers. Now, if the marginal adjustment cost of search is low, then establishments will be able to adjust their search intensity in response to these exhaustion, in response to workers leaving. How, so as a result, they can get back to being around hundred formal workers. And this is what is called as bunching. This is what we see as bunching in the steady-state distribution. On the other hand, if the marginal adjustment cost of search is high, then establishments will not be able to adjust their search intensity much in response to exogenous shocks. So as a result, they're going to stay below one hundred formal workers, and they're not going to replace their lost workers quickly. So this will manifest in the firm size distribution not as bunching at the threshold, but it will be spread out below the threshold, which is what we see in the Indian data. Now.
Try to conclude, please.
Yeah, sorry. So this is my, right. So in order to quantify the magnitude of regulatory cost, I fit this model to establishments in the treated states. I assume that in the data, the establishment size distribution in the treated states from two thousand and eleven until the reform is in steady state. The reduced form regression that I showed, the reduced form regression that I have is informative about how transition probabilities of establishments respond and how substitution patterns of establishments respond once the regulatory threshold is changed. Similarly, in my model, different values of regulatory costs and different policy invariant parameters correspond to different steady-state distributions in the treated states. And it also produces different establishment-sized transitions around the threshold and different substitution patterns around the threshold. And the, I'm using simulated method of moments procedure to pin down the parameters in such a way that the model matches closely with their respective empirical components. So, yes, so this is, this is all that I have. I have, I'm yet, I'm still working on the estimation strategy. And once I get the parameter estimates, the goal is to calculate the aggregate productivity consequences of the regulation.
Thank you very much, Kaliyani. It's a very, very interesting paper. David?
Sorry, I thought that we were going to do both, both papers and then discussion.
Ah, I'm sorry. Then, if you prefer, then we do the second paper and you make a common discussion at the end.
I think that'll be quick. I have, I have all the sites together.
Okay, okay, then, then let's do this way. Then the follower speaker is Kanika. Kanika, can you share your, please?
Thanks so much. I hope my screen is visible now. Okay. So much, Aye and, and Arias for giving us a chance to present this paper. So this, this is joint work with Ananda Chakravarti and Shekhar Dhamar. And this work is motivated by the literature that has looked at the effect of economic shocks and how it affects both output and trade. And the fact that the effects on output and trade are pretty much different, but the output recovery happening much more earlier than, than trade, which has been referred to as the trade collapse in, in the literature. And one of the examples, one of the more recent examples of the trade collapse was the post-global financial crisis, when the international trade contracted more than the global GDP. In this paper, we look at domestic trade collapse in the context of India. And we try to answer the question as to why the street collapse occurred. Why domestic trade matters? There is, you know, research that shows that intra-country trade costs can be as high as inter-country trade costs. And that's one of the reasons why we've been interested in looking at the domestic trade per se. So how initial shock, and the shock here we look at is the COVID-nineteen lockdown that happened in, in India, how it affected domestic trade, and how the firms adjust to it, more importantly. So what leads to this trade collapse and the specific mechanism that we want to look at in this paper is that of regional realignment of firms motivated by what was the extent of expansion that they could do in their home markets. So as I said, we're going to look at the COVID-nineteen national lockdown that happened in India as the exogenous shock to trade costs in this space. To give you a brief overview, the lockdown happened in India in March twenty twenty, which included a complete restriction on the movement of goods and people in the country. By mid-May, the restrictions had started to ease. By August, there was a complete lift-up of restrictions on transportation. And in fact, by September, the economy of India had gone back to its pre-pandemic level in terms of, you know, the various economic indices. However, what happened to domestic trade in the country? So if one looks at the inter-region sales as a proportion of the intra-region sales in the country in the aggregate in twenty twenty, year-on-year growth from twenty nineteen, it's clearly visible that after the lockdown in March, there was a, there was a drastic decline in, in domestic trade, which recovered over a period of time, but never really went back to its pre-pandemic levels. So again, you know, a trade collapse in the context of domestic trade is, is what happened in the country. So in this paper, we first document rigorously the existence, both immediate and persistence of trade collapse, even like months down, months after the national lockdown. We explain this trade collapse to the channel of regional realignment. By regional realignment, I mean that plants which were selling more outside their region. So here, by a region, I mean a state in India. So India is divided into many administrative states. Plants which were selling more outside their state or outside their region were the ones who shifted inside the region for, for both sales as well as input sourcing. Now, which were the products which were more likely for undergore realignment? Here, the products where the, you know, where either the sellers could move inwards or the sources of inputs could source from within their home region were the ones who actually moved inwards, caused this shock. And in fact, this realignment led to an increased sales growth and helped firms recover from, from the economic shock. We contribute broadly to three strands of literature. One is the literature on trade collapse. And here we add a new channel to it, which is the channel of regional realignment, which can lead to persistence in trade collapse after an economic shock. The second literature we contribute to is the supply chain propagations. And here, again, our contribution is similar. We, we, we test for a new channel here, which has not been, you know, tested by the earlier papers, largely because of lack of data. When looking at international trade, one journey doesn't have the same level of frequency of data from sourcing in the country or selling in the country. At the same time, in the context of international trade, there are many other channels like protectionism, trade credit, as well as differential changes in demand across countries, which cannot be perfectly controlled. However, in this setting, as I'll show you later, we're able to control for these channels. The dataset that we use is the EVA Bill's data that is collected by the Goods and Services Tax Network in India. And an EVA bill is required to be generated for transportation of goods above seven hundred USD. The data period is from January two thousand and nineteen to December twenty twenty. This system was put in place in April twenty eighteen, but the data collection only stabilized at the end of twenty eighteen. And hence, you know, we can only look at this particular period, we can only go this much further back into time. There are broadly two data sets here that one can use. One is the plant level data and the other is the product level data. On the plant side, there are two data sets. So one for inter-region and the other for intra-region. Both these data sets have the top thousand plants for every region or state for every month. However, it's possible to match these plants over time as well as across these data sets using a unique adding file. Though these are only top thousand plants, but they contribute almost sixty percent of the total region level sales in the country. We have access to similar data sets on the input side as well. Additionally, we merge these data sets with the ministry of corporate affairs because what this dataset doesn't give us is the industry in which the plant operates. And we're able to match a large proportion of these plants and get their NIC classifications. For our analysis, we, since, you know, top thousand plants may keep changing from month to month, we, we, we want to control for exit and entry in our analysis. We keep a balance set of plants, of which we have total sales available for all the twenty-four months in our analysis. We do the same set of plants on the input side for which total input is available for all the twenty-four months. So in general, these are large plants, and they actually contribute to almost fifty-two percent of the sales. So we're not missing out on, missing out on a lot by restricting ourselves to these set of plants. On the product side, we again have similar data, but here there are three data sets. One is inter-region sales at the product level, at the four-digit level. The other is intra-region or within state sales. And the third is how much the region is receiving from the other states in aggregate. So what we don't know is from which state it's coming, but what we know is the total aggregate inter, inter, inter-region receivables. Here again, the data is for top thousand products in every month. And we keep a balance set for which total sales, for which total sales is available for all the twenty-four months. The first thing we do is we look at the, the patterns in total sales and inputs with time in, in twenty twenty. So what I've plotted here are the double difference estimates, which is essentially the change in a given month in twenty twenty, which is mentioned on the graph vis-à-vis January twenty twenty as compared to the same change in twenty nineteen for the same month over January twenty nineteen. Controlling for form level unobserved heterogeneity, plant level unobserved heterogeneity. And here, you know, the patterns are similar. We see that there is a drastic fall in total sales, which recovers by September. A drastic fall in total inputs, which recovers by September. However, the domestic trade doesn't recover by September. So there's a drastic fall in domestic trade immediately post the lockdown, which remains at a lower level up to the end of twenty twenty. And we observe the same for the inputs as well, that, you know, the domestic trade and inputs also sort of remains lower than the pre-pandemic levels, even towards the end of twenty twenty. Here, I must point out that in twenty twenty, India did not see any other wave of COVID-nineteen. So we were pretty much COVID-free till the end of twenty twenty. There was no health shock that happened in the country in, in, further in that particular year after the lockdown. More importantly, we want to test for the regional realignment, which are these firms basically, which are moving inwards, which we see the trade collapse in the country. So to test this out, we define the fraction of pre-pandemic interregional depend, interregional sales or inputs over total sales in twenty nineteen for both sales as well as inputs. On average, what we find is that fifty-three percent of sales are interregional for a particular plant. And sixty-four percent of inputs are sourced from outside the region for, for an average plant. To examine our hypothesis, we regress the outcome variable of log of intra-region sales, inter-region sales, inter-region inputs, and inter-region inputs on an indicator for month and year dummy, which is interacted with the fraction that we've constructed. And this gives us the estimate of gamma two. We further control for plant level unobserved heterogeneity as well as plant-specific month seasonality. In addition, to control for the demand changes and the changes in prices, we control for the sector in which the firm operates, interacting with the month and year of its effects. X's are the other control variables. Specifically, when we look at the, the sales side, we always control for the input dependence of a particular plant. Similarly, whenever we look at the input side, we always control for the sales dependence of a particular plant. Here, the coefficient of interest, as I mentioned, was gamma two, which basically gives us what's the impact of inter-region sales dependence on plant outcomes in month M in year twenty twenty vis-à-vis January twenty nineteen, over and above the same outcome in the year twenty, in the year twenty nineteen. So this is with respect to that in twenty twenty. So it's essentially plotting heterogeneous difference in difference treatment effects. So this, so here, we plot the effect on inter-region sales in the first graph and on intra-region sales of second graph. And here, I'm plotting the gamma two coefficients. And what we find is that firms which are more dependent on inter-region sales, their inter-region sales fell more post the lockdown and continues to remain lower than the pre-pandemic level. However, these firms increased their exposure to intra-region sales, you know, after some time has elapsed. So, so they're basically diversified and they moved from inter to, to intra-region. Similarly, we look on the input side and we find a similar pattern where the firms who was, which were sourcing more inter-region before the pandemic have moved more inwards in terms of sourcing their inputs because their inter-region exposure has declined and their inter-region sourcing has increased. Second, we, we check the same hypothesis using product level data. Here again, we construct for a given product in region R and inter-region sales fractions on the pre-pandemic data, which is the proportion of sales of that product that was being sold outside the region before the pandemic. In addition to testing our hypothesis for inter-regional dependence, we additionally see which, you know, which other characteristic can, can explain this realignment towards the domestic or towards the home market. And here, we construct an entity called Scope for Home Expansion, which is basically exploiting the idea that I can only move in, I can, you know, as, as a producer and as a supplier, if I'm selling goods, I can only move inwards into my home region if, you know, I had this excess demand to cater to. If at least before pandemic, some bit of that product was also being sourced from outside the region to begin with. So here, we define scope for home expansion as a minima of two entities. One is the inter-region sales fraction. So if a region was not selling anything outside the home region before the pandemic, then the scope for home expansion is zero. Similarly, if the region was not buying any of that product from other regions before the pandemic, then again, the scope for home expansion is zero. When both these fractions are large, that's when the scope for home expansion would also be large for a particular. We estimate a similar specification. Here, our outcome variables are again, inter-region sales, intra-region sales of product K in region R in month M and year Y. The heterogeneity that we want to look at is with respect to the inter-region sales fraction as well as the scope. Uh, the heterogeneity that we want to look at is with respect to the inter-region sales fraction as well as uh the scope for home expansion. We control for product region level unobserved heterogeneity as well as seasonality for every month for that given product in that, in that region. Second, we also control for the overall uh HSN code level changes in product demand over time, because we don't want demand changes which may be induced by economic changes to affect our estimates. Uh, additionally, when looking at the sales outcome, we control what was the exposure to inter-region receivables fraction, uh, to make sure that our results on inter-region uh sales fraction are not being uh convoluted uh by similar variation on the receivable side.
Kanika, then you have five minutes.
Okay, thank you. Uh, yeah, uh, and the coefficient of interest here are the coefficients I have two, which basically tell us what is the heterogeneous impact on inter-region and intra-region product level sales uh due to uh, 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 the fraction that I just mentioned. So first, we look at the effect of inter-region sales uh dependence for a product. And we find similar patterns that we found for uh the plants again, that inter-region sales fall more uh for products which were more dependent on inter-region sales to begin with. At the same time, intra-region sales increase for these products uh, uh, more as compared to products which were not that dependent uh on uh, on inter-region sales. Uh, we find similar patterns using the scope for home expansion variable. But interestingly, for scope for home expansion, we find an immediate effect even during the month of lockdown, where um, uh, these products managed to shift from inter to intra-region, where it was possible for them to make this shift. And then this persisted towards the end of twenty twenty with some bullwhip effect happening in May-June, where, you know, uh, you do go back with the contracts uh in the month of May and June, uh, but then it comes back. We conduct a bunch of robustness checks, both at the plant and the product level uh, uh, in terms of, you know, using district level variations, trying to get rid of other hypotheses such as firms' financial conditions, which may explain these patterns that we see. Look at the unbalanced sample as well as control for regional level variation in the contingency of lockdown over time. Uh, all our results broadly hold. I will not go over them in the, in the, in the interest of time. Uh, we importantly also estimate, you know, uh, instead of double difference, we do a first difference estimation, but which allows us to go back and look back into pre-trends much further, just looking uh, rather than just looking at the month of February. And here again, we do this for all the uh, uh, analysis that I showed you so far, and we don't find any uh, uh, free trends uh before uh the lockdown hit the country. Uh, additionally, what we find is that the scope for home expansion aided the total sales recovery uh of plants. So uh, here is the total sales, and we find that, you know, plants which had a higher scope for home expansion, they, they managed to recover the total sales much early. Let me not go over the product list again in the interest of time and conclude. Uh, so essentially, we've shown that domestic, you know, we've actually documented uh the domestic, domestic trade collapse caused an economic shock. This was in the first papers to do that uh when it came out last year. Um, and what we find is that regional realignment, which is aided by the scope for home expansion, uh, can be one of the channels which leads to persistence in trade collapse. And we find that this actually aids recovery in total output. But again, we cannot say anything about welfare, because uh, given the reduction in variety consumer welfare can actually fall. So, let me stop here, thank you.
Thank you very much, Nika. Uh, an excellent paper. Uh, then let uh give the floor to David.
I'm great, thank you very much. Hopefully everyone uh can see my slides. Um, so uh, thank you for a great uh, uh, set of talks um, uh, today, uh, for very interesting papers and um, I'm gonna, you know, talk briefly about the last two. I guess I'll go in reverse order, so the paper we've just seen uh at first uh and uh make some, um, I guess, uh, uh, fairly broad comments uh on, um, uh, on the work. And so, uh, let me just give a kind of brief uh, uh, overview um, uh, of uh, of, of the paper. So, um, so kind of, I, I, I kind of, its center is this kind of a, a, kind of novel trade data, I guess, uh, uh, research is starting to gain access to, but it's one of the first papers I've seen where we have this uh new goods and service tax uh in India, and this is provided, provided uh kind of new uh, 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 insight and new ability to kind of track movement of goods, uh, both within state and across state, coming from these uh goods and service tax uh receipts. And what they're gonna do is they're gonna use uh, uh, these data to try and uh think about the impact of these uh, uh, COVID shutdowns and this two-month uh state border restriction between uh kind of March uh, uh, and May twenty twenty on both intra uh and interstate uh, uh, commerce. And kind of at its center is this uh, 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 quite convincing event study where essentially we're looking within a particular product, a particular month and a particular year, uh, and we're comparing across, you know, firms where there was kind of very limited scope for substitution from inter to intra uh, 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 state trade uh, uh, versus ones where there was lots of substitution. Uh, and we'll see kind of very stark differences between uh, uh, how these uh, kind of two types of, of firms or two types of products uh, uh, responded. And kind of the big takeaway here is that there's been this kind of a, a substantial realignment of sourcing uh and sales towards kind of firms and customers in your own uh, 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 state. Uh, and uh, um, uh, to some degree, that's persistent. Uh, it doesn't just kind of fade away uh, uh, once uh these kind of state border restrictions are lifted. You know, as uh Kanika uh, uh, made that, ma- made clear, you know, it's a very nice contribution to both the literature on trade collapses and, and this kind of a, a more, a smaller literature on thinking about vent for surplus uh, uh, when uh kind of uh firms uh shift their sales uh in response uh to shocks in certain markets. Okay, so, you know, I've kind of thought a bit about, you know, what are we uh, uh, kind of really showing here? And, you know, kind of the way I would think about it is, you know, some relationships are expanding, others are, are shrinking. And some new relationships are formed, others are destroyed. And what we're doing essentially is we kind of have a way of identifying the lucky firms. Who are those? These are the firms who kind of saw a big drop in local competition, because all the people uh, 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 are selling to the markets. They were selling to uh, 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 couldn't access those markets because of these border restrictions. Uh, and that drop in local competition was in excess of their loss of sales coming from the fact that they couldn't access markets elsewhere. Okay, so these are kind of the lucky firms who, who have a lot more market locally now and a lot less, uh, uh, and that's uh, increases much greater than what they lost elsewhere. And so these guys relatively aren't going to do so badly. Meanwhile, the unlucky firms are the ones who the opposite's true, which is their sales elsewhere, you know, fell a lot, because a lot of their sales were coming from elsewhere, yet uh, there's a limited uh change in local competition, because few people were, were kind of uh, from other states were selling uh, uh, in their uh local market. Uh, and so essentially what we're doing is we're showing that these guys who we'd expect to really be harmed are much uh, uh, worse off than the guys who, 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 who would expect uh, 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 to not suffer very much and may even gain. Uh, and indeed, we'll, we'll kind of find those relatives. Now, what would we think would happen here in aggregate? Here, the identification is more, more difficult, you know, typically this is swept out in the fixed effects. But, you know, what we'd expect is, you know, at least if there were capacity constraints in the short run or, 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 or at least it was very costly to massively increase output, then we'd expect kind of a big drop in sales uh just from these imbalances. Uh, because essentially, uh, 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 you know, only if uh kind of trade was balanced uh, uh bilaterally in all of these cases, uh, uh, would there be kind of none of these lucky and unlucky firms? Okay, and so they're kind of real costs uh, uh, to these kind of, this kind of short run uh, uh, imbalance. And so, you know, in my mind, uh, uh, that's kind of central to what we're seeing here. So, you know, the other thought I had is, you know, this is really a paper about reshoring. Uh, Kanika didn't make that uh, uh, link too explicit, but, but this is, you know, a huge topic right now, asking about American firms who are trying to bring their manufacturing closer to home uh, uh, or uh, to be less reliant on, 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 on foreign markets, et cetera. Uh, and so, you know, as we saw with international trade during the pandemic, we, there's a massive increase here in interstate trade costs in the short run. Uh, that's forcing firms to kind of purchase inputs locally, to sell their outputs locally. Uh, and then the trade costs subsequently declined again. You could now sell uh, uh, across borders or internationally, uh, uh, more generally. Um, and many of these uh, uh, kind of uh, uh, patterns persisted to some degree. And so, the way I think about it, there's many of these new matches that they were forming stuck. And so broadly speaking, there's three reasons this could be. Uh, one is, you know, maybe there were some fixed costs of finding new matches. And as a result of being kind of forced to do this, because my old matches I couldn't, couldn't uh, 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 kind of match with anymore, um, we now have more matches, we now maybe have better matches, because I, I tried out some new funds and it turns out that they're actually a very good matches, an input supplier or a new, a new uh, uh, outlet for me to sell my products. Um, so, uh, uh, in this case, obviously, you know, the government doesn't want to subsidize this type of thing, since they chose not to make those uh, uh, investments in these extra uh, 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 matches uh pre-pandemic. Uh, but, you know, productivity should be higher post-pandemic. Uh, alternatively, perhaps there are these relational contracts. Uh, uh, these kind of distant ones in other states were severed, uh, and now the matches are a lot worse. Uh, uh, because I'm kind of losing out on a bunch of these uh, uh, relational contracts are being held together by repeated interaction. There, we'd expect productivity uh, uh, to have fallen, and this is kind of clearly a bad thing. Um, the third, which has got, garnered a lot of attention recently, is, you know, maybe firms have reconsidered their supply chains. Previously, they just cared about getting, say, the cheapest uh, 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 suppliers. Now they also care about resilience. And what do we mean by resilience? We mean, you know, not being caught in a situation where you've lost a critical uh, uh, supplier. And we hear a lot of talk about this, and I, you know, I've been speaking to a bunch of firms recently, and, you know, this is kind of number one uh, uh, topic of discussion for them is making their supply chains more resilient. So in this case, you could think of this is, they're willing to stomach worse matches. I'm, I'm willing to also buy from this local supplier who's not so good uh or more expensive. Why am I willing to do that? Well, now if there's another shock uh, uh, that comes along, I'll be in a better position uh, 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 to not be disrupted. Uh, and in, in this case, we think it's, you know, uh, it's assuming these decisions are optimal rather than fads, uh, then we think that this is uh, 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 you know, a better outcome for the firm. But we would still, you know, see uh, uh, the productivity fall. We'll only see the benefits of this uh, uh, when there is uh, 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 kind of another negative uh, uh, shock. So, you know, my main suggestion here is maybe we can distinguish some of these stories and kind of, uh, you know, go more in the direction of trying to understand the impacts of this, this reshoring uh by, you know, there's different predictions on productivity between one and two and three, they're moving in opposite directions. If they're relational contracts, the data's not ideal for this, but we should see certain types of relationships broken first, uh, uh, like the work of Rocker Machiavello and co-authors. If it's about resilience, then maybe this is more, gonna be more common for critical inputs, less for less critical inputs. Uh, and these things seem, seem like hypotheses that, that, that uh, uh, could be tested. But kind of the main takeaway here is this is a super topical question, this reshoring. And these Indian firms maybe doing, have, may, may have done this. That's why these, these kind of relationships have persisted, why they continue to buy more uh domestically and that's from abroad. And uh, maybe we have uh, some, some, uh, insight that we can draw from that. Um, okay, there's a minor point about selected samples, which I'll, I'll pass on after Kanika. So, uh, let me pivot quickly and kind of talk about uh, uh, the previous paper uh, that was uh, uh, excellently presented by uh, Kaliani on size-based regulations. Um, so, let me try and give a little bit of background uh by way of motivation. So, you know, a kind of central question for people interested in misallocation and, and productivity and development more generally is, you know, are big firms or small firms more distorted? And obviously, this matters for policymakers. Uh, governments are deciding, you know, which firms to uh, 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 kind of subsidize and which to not. And at least my prior here is that it probably is true that big firms are more distorted. If you look at the evidence of Shane Olken that uh, uh, um, Kaliani mentions in, in, in the paper, they show that at least average products of capital are much higher in big firms, although uh, uh, they can't measure marginal products of capital. We don't have particularly good evidence uh, uh, on, on, on those. Uh, McCagan, Patchnik show that uh, when employment in Vietnam moves from kind of smaller firms to larger firms as a result of trade, aggregate TFP uh, 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 goes up. And so these are kind of all suggestions that maybe indeed, uh, there are, are, are larger distortions in bigger firms. Uh, and governments uh, uh, may well believe this as well. At least if you look at their subsidy programs, they typically spend much more on, on giving money to big firms than they do on giving money, money to small firms. Uh, uh, sometimes order of magnitudes uh, uh, difference uh there. So, you know, a puzzle here is, uh, you know, we think there's good reasons, uh, 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 good, good evidence that uh, these big firms are more distorted. But when we turn to our basic theories, we often think of small firms as more distorted, particularly, particularly when we think about credit constraints, which is, you know, maybe the kind of central distortion uh in much of this literature, since uh, small firms typically don't have a lot of collateral, uh, uh, and there are other reasons why, why they struggle to access uh, uh, credit. So this is where kind of size-based regulations come in as one of the key sources why it may be the case uh that larger funds are in fact more distorted uh, uh, as some of the other evidence uh, 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 suggests. And it's kind of central, one of these distortions is on uh, uh, on a kind of labor and regulation. Uh, yet, when we've looked for this, as in Amarapu and Gekcha and others, um, we don't find a lot of bunching, which is a bit of a puzzle, like if there are these site-dependent distortions, we need things like that in order to, to uh, 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 kind of uh, generate uh, 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 these more distorted big firms. Uh, but we don't find them when we look uh, 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 around these uh, um, particular thresholds. So, you know, this is where this paper comes in and makes uh, uh, the uh, um, the kind of uh, uh, has the insight that, you know, it's not necessarily true that there'll be a lot of bunching. In particular, I find they're very wary of crossing this threshold, and they may start restricting employment growth well before reaching that threshold. Uh, and so we won't see as much bunching uh, uh, at the threshold itself. And there's a combination here of reduced uh, uh, form work, which uh, went through in some detail. Uh, in, in particular, looking at these kind of very novel, I, I haven't seen done lives before, changes in state uh, 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 rules around uh, uh, where they started enforcing these labor laws uh, using a dynamic difference in difference, uh, and that nice evidence on contract labor and capital ratios. Then there's a, a very much in progress structural model. I guess the uh, updated slides were sent to me yesterday. Uh, it's extremely rich, and I recommend everyone uh, 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 read the paper in more detail when there's a kind of final version of it. Uh, uh, and uh, as we kind of saw a glimpse of, there's a lot going on here. There are separations, there's hiring and furnaces, and indogenous search intensity with convex costs, uh, capital and contract labor, et cetera. And kind of the main takeaway is, you know, not only are firms slowing down their search, they approach the threshold, uh, but the reason this bunching's not occurring is because essentially, uh, if it is uh, 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 you know, very costly to adjust the intensity of your search effort, you know, to change how your HR team works, for example, uh, uh, and to kind of rush through new hires, then essentially when negative shocks hit the firm, uh, it's gonna take a long time to come back uh, 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 up to the threshold. Uh, and that's gonna lead uh, 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 to uh, much less bunching than you would get uh, if firms can quickly adjust intensity when they're hit by these negative uh, uh, shocks.
David, uh, for your information, we have only two minutes.
Okay, so, okay, so let me wrap, let me wrap up in thirty seconds. I have some questions on, on the reduced uh, 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 form results. I guess there's some question on how well you can rationalize both this kind of large change you find with the policy change uh, moving from a hundred to three hundred, uh, as well as kind of the lack of, uh, of, of the bunching uh, uh, at one hundred in the cross-section. Uh, and in my mind, you know, trying to kind of, uh, I, um, write a model that's consistent with both of those is a real challenge. And I, 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 I'm looking forward to kind of seeing uh, uh, the results uh of these estimates eventually. Um, okay, so I'll wrap up there and we can open up to, I guess, questions.
Uh, thank you very much, David, for such interesting and challenging uh, comments and questions. And uh, uh, unfortunately, we have only two minutes. Um, i- i- in fact, there are no uh, questions in the chat. I, I thought a couple of questions, at least for the two first speaker, but I, I think we will have no time. Then perhaps a very, very quick question for, for Federico. Then, uh, i- i- is, is very clear that indogenizing the, the, the network will, will improve a lot our understanding of, of the role of, of shocks in particular to, to welfare and uh productivity. But uh, uh, is it possible to, to state conditions under which uh, the shock will, will amplify, condition in which shocks will contract or will reduce the, the effect of, of shocks?
Yeah, thanks, Amad. Yes, uh, definitely. I mean, that's super important, and, and we show in our, in our model, that's gonna depend on, on the value of the parameters that we estimate. So, you know, whether you estimate that uh, goods are substitutes or complement in the production function and so on, those type of things will affect in which direction, eh, eh, whether shocks amplify, I mean, whether the production either amplifies or dampens eh, eh, the shock. So that's definitely part of the predictions of the model.
Uh, thank, thank you very much. It, it's a pity that, uh, I think there is a lot of interesting thing to debate. I will ask a very, very short question to, to Pamela. I mean, and it's about uh, policy recommendation. What would be uh, the trade-off between decreasing market power and increasing uh, uh, self-employment? Then uh, what, what, uh, do you think?
I think, uh, the-
I think there is, there is, we're showing the last manufacturing. So what is important, it's the way that you want to reduce labor market power. What is the policy? You can attack a policy with like the labor supply, so training of workers and moving them to the formal sector, reducing, trying to reduce informality. That will give you a different set of labor market outcomes than a policy that tries to, for instance, decrease the fixed cost of entry of firms. So it's, it's, it's targeting labor demand. So I think just empirically, it's important to, to, for each of these particular situations, quantify and check at the end what will be the results in each of these policies. So that's sort of what we want to highlight.
Okay, thank, thank you very much. And then I will, unfortunately, it's four thirty here in, in England. I, I thank you very much all for this incredibly good session and looking forward to see you in person somewhere somehow in the future. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Thanks, Amad. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you, Mark. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye.